Call to order the March 1st, 2021 city council meeting and ask the city recorder to please call the roll.
Council Linville?
Here.
Council West?
Here.
Council President Ockrevall?
Here.
Council Lehan?
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Here. Will the city manager please lead us in the pledge of allegiance and will councillors mute their mics, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion on the order of agenda?
Your honor, I move to approve the order of agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the order of agenda, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. We all know what a great thing it was in this city and this part of the world to have such fantastic weather this weekend. I want to thank our volunteers across the city who were picking up loads of branches from their neighbors. We had all kinds of people going back and forth and getting branches and bringing them in. We had some volunteers at the debris drop-off station also helping to just make that work and we finished it up. And we just can't, I'm sure everybody agrees, we just are very glad that we were able to do that. I'm sure there were many different ways to handle that problem. I saw different cities use different approaches and I think all of them were kind of moving, just getting the best they could, getting the best outcome they could to moving the branches out of the way. And I think we have a good result here in Wilsonville and I just want to thank the city manager and staff for all their ingenuity and problem solving there. And, you know, I'm sure we still have more to go and as manager Brian Cosgrove said, other things to take care of, but it really accomplished a lot, so thank you for that. During the, and I also wanted to say that all of the people in Wilsonville have their power on as far as I know. That was accomplished and is another wonderful solution. So just going to give a brief update on some of the things that, to update the council that I was doing the last couple of weeks. I won't give you all of the meetings, but as a member of the Metropolitan Mayor's consortium, I had a lot of opportunities for meeting, short meetings with state representatives and it was really educational. This organization, this organization is really here to advocate for the role and needs of cities and we're hearing really good things about the opportunity to, you know, from our state representatives about the opportunity to hear from cities. So everybody doesn't have the same objective all the way down the road, but I think there are lots of common needs that we have and it's been a good experience. One of the, we heard, had a presentation, you know, kind of a discussion with Senate President Peter Courtney, Majority Leader Rob Wagner. We also met with House Majority Leader Smith Warner and Representative Susan McLean. And heard about transportation, lots of different things that the legislature is working on. I also had a meeting with the Clackamas County Business Alliance Government Affairs Committee and they invite different elected officials to talk about what's going on in their cities. So it was my opportunity to talk about Wilsonville and we had a, we had a good discussion with them, got to have some back and forth discussion about what's happening in Wilsonville with our housing, our equitable housing strategic plan, our goals for the Boone Bridge improvement and a number of other things. So that was a good opportunity to update them and hear back from them. And I also got to sit in on another presentation that was given to that committee about the freeway infrastructure. And we will probably have another presentation at our city council about the, from ODOT, about how the transportation improvements are going to be rolling out. I think that's the main thing I had on that and I wanted to also highlight that you might have received, there was a press release that I'll make sure that our city gets posted to our website about the coronavirus that came out today from the Oregon Health Division. And it tells that they have changed the way they are asking people to sign up for vaccines. And so it is now a matter of getting on this website, which is covidvaccine.org.gov and you, you sign up when you're eligible and then they contact you for your appointment. And so you can read in the press release that we will post to the website that if somebody already has an appointment, I think that stays in place, but this is the new program going forward. And if people do need more information and that is not accessible to them, offer people to call 211 for information. And tomorrow I am going to have a tour of the vaccine site that Clackamas County Health and Tuolatin Valley Fire and Rescue are operating at Clackamas Community College. So that's just a brief tour of that, so we'll look forward to that. And I know that our vaccine supply starts increasing, a lot of things will go more easily. So thank everybody for their patience and recommend that website and calling 211. The next meeting-
Can you give the address once more?
Yes, I will. It is covidvaccine.org.gov.
Okay.
And also just want to announce that the next city council meeting is March 15th, 2021. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the letter that we've prepared for me to send in, in support of our legislative agenda item regarding the request for legislate, the legislation for, to support the implementation of the next phase of ODOT's proposed I-5 Boone Bridge and Seismic Improvement Project. So you have the letter before you and as you know, we have some significant dollars to identify, it's approximately 3.7 to 4.1 million to get this bridge to the next phase of design. And so the procedure is that I plan to send this letter to Representative Courtney Neron, who's been very helpful to us in this process, and then we will make further contacts and just keep promoting this and keep you informed. So does anyone have any questions about what that letter says or comments? Okay. You've got a hand, yes, Council West?
Yeah, are we also going to send the letter to Senator Thatcher and to Senator Kenaway? Is it Kenaway, did I say it right? Yeah. Is the new Senator, Kenaway, thank you, thank you, Kenaway, is the new Senator, he used to be the House, yeah, so now he's the Senator, taking place of Senator Allen. So are we going to send it to our whole legislative delegation?
We are going to do a big communication, yes. And we were starting with Representative Neron because she started this process with us and we're asking her to help, help us in that endeavor. But yes, you're right, we will be doing a big communication with the legislature. Any other hands up that I'm not seeing? Okay, thank you. I will now move to our communications segment and under, I'm glad to welcome Chad Higgins, Mike Bondi and Dan Orset, who will provide information on the solar harvest project at OSU's North Willamette Research and Extension Center.
Good evening, committee. We're just getting connected with the PowerPoint. Dan, I would like to introduce Dan Orzek, who's the Oregon Clean Power Cooperative's president. Dan, are you able to share your screen and, thank you. Distinguished committee, thank you for hearing me. I'm Chad Higgins from Oregon State University and my research is, it can basically be summed up as I focus on agricultural sustainability. And not only from a resource management perspective, but also an economic perspective and to help growers, you know, stay afloat and support American family farmers, of which I am myself one. Next slide, please. So, next slide, please. That was the first two slides from memory. One of the things that I've gotten into a lot recently is this conflict between farming and solar energy production and the fact that there is and was a significant amount of land converted over to solar use before the LCDC ruling. And it's not just in Oregon, it's nationwide and in fact, the western coast, the Western U.S. Director of the American Farm Land Trust told me that it's basically tearing communities apart in terms of what do you decide to support, one or the other? Well, why not both? Next slide, please. And this is, this is the system of both and to get your mind wrapped around this, you have to realize a couple of things. The first and most important is that most plants, particularly agricultural crops, don't need all the light they receive. In fact, most crops can grow in about a third of the light or a half of the light. Now, this isn't for every crop and isn't for every situation, but there are several and a vast majority of crops that can do this. What you, what you have then is an energy surplus in your, in your field. You have excess solar energy. And if you can design a canopy to harvest and sell that energy as another agricultural product, there you, there you have an extra revenue stream. But then, once you do this, some interesting things happen. Once you relieve those plants of that light stress, just like a human being, you go from the sun to the shade, you sweat less, right? The plants use quite a bit less water, leaving more water in the ground for other purposes. The less stressed plants and the more comfortable plants produce more food and better food. And the microclimate that the crops produce actually enhances the productivity of the panels because solar panels are more productive when they're cooler, just like any electronic device, just like laptops in front of you. So the cooling aspects of the crops actually help the solar panel. So we have this, you know, symbiosis going on here. And on the left you see our, one of our early trials of beans there. Next slide. So I'm going to go through some evidence. Here is a comparison of biomass production for pasture grass in the shaded areas of the solar array versus the control area and then in alley area, which is kind of an in-between those two. And you can clearly see there is a lot more dry biomass production in the shaded area and almost double, basically double. And these plants, you know, we did double the production, but we used less water in the end because of the removal of light stress. So the plant water use efficiency tripled in doing that. Next slide, please. And the references are down here. We did livestock trials to see if sheep were bothered by the solar panels and tracked sheep behavior over two seasons. And these are our sheep, they look happy to me. But don't take my word for it, we actually measured stress hormone levels and we measured live weight gains and we measured wool production and we measured water consumption. And you got just as much productivity out of, out of the sheep in the solar array than outside in an open pasture. And in fact, when given a choice, the sheep actually preferentially hung out under the solar panels, which isn't very surprising. But they also only ate the grass under the solar panels. They gave up eating the grass on the open pasture and they only ate the section under the solar panels. So they preferred that situation. There wasn't a marked stress increase and we had happy sheep. Next slide, please. Another area you see, an argument for solar is that it, is that it can be used for pollinator habitat, so we checked that out as well. This is a site, this is our site out at Eagle Point, so it's, it's down south. And we actually found that there are more blooms in certain areas in the solar array than anywhere around and that the pollinators were indiscriminate. So they didn't care if the solar panels were there, they just went where there was the most blooms. So we had more, both native and non-native pollinators in the aisle. I suppose the biggest finding of this was that the flower bloom was delayed, you know, you gave something shade, you delay their growth slightly, retard their rate of growth slightly. And that actually helps the pollinators quite a bit because there's essentially a pollen desert timing in late August and early September, just before the rains, there's usually not much pollen for the pollinators. And we actually had a significant amount of pollen there in those desert times because of the delay in the bloom. Next slide, please.
Chad, can I suggest we jump forward a slide or two?
Sure, I'm almost done. So here's the, here's the proof that we make more power. Next slide. And we can, we can make a lot of power. 1% of global crop rent can offset all of the global energy demands. In the U.S., that would be about 20% of our energy demand because we produce more, or we consume more energy than the world on average. Next slide. And that begs the question, how can we make this better? And to do that, we're doing new experiments. We have to have a purpose-built facility. Everything we've done now was ad hoc. We just took advantage of solar arrays that were installed, they were never designed for this and we just made it happen. So how do we get the design parameters? Well, this is what we're going to build. Here at Enrec, if you're familiar with the site, there is the, there's the outline of it, it's about six acres. They're tucked behind the main buildings and infrastructure at Enrec. And if we look at the next slide, there's a outlay of the experimental design. So it doesn't look like a normal array, we're not actually optimizing for solar harvesting, we're optimizing for scientific discovery. And Dan has indulged my design and we have come together with growers and with scientists and with energy producers and made this design, which is actually called a complete randomized block design, which is a standardized scientific design with treatments and controls. Okay, next slide. And here's another outline. This is the same information again. Okay, I think I'm, I think I'm going to hand off to Dan now.
Right. Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and members of the council, thank you for your time. So the, I'm the general manager of the Oregon Clean Power Cooperative, we're a member-owned co-op and we, I'm going to show you what we've been doing and then we'll, I will show you how we want to support Professor Higgins and his research. So we have been taking investments from community, community members. Technically, we offer shares of stock in solar projects and building solar projects around the state. So this, you may recognize, the church, Lutheran Church in Beaverton, we've done three projects for the Cravall School District, this is number two out of three. Benton County, done three projects in Hood River, two for the city, one for the county. This is, we've done about 20 projects in total. This one for the Rogue Valley Council Governments in the Medford area is the first of about 10 we're doing that will have batteries attached to them. So the advantage of batteries is if the grid goes out, you, you can have a place with power in your community. All right, so this is what we've been doing, but it's not what we're going to do at, at the Extension Center in Aurora because you may know there's already a solar array there that supplies all of the energy that the site uses. So we can't put any more solar there. So fortunately, there's a new program called the Community Solar Program that's just rolling out in Oregon. This is a program that's been out in other states, Colorado, for probably six, eight years. It was authorized by the legislature in 2016 and then the PUC went through an extended rulemaking process and it's just now beginning to roll out. So what this does is lets us attach the solar to the grid and lets people and organizations sign up for the power even if they're not directly connected to it. So the way that looks is we build a solar project at Noiric, for example, and you, both individually and as a city, can sign up for the power. The power goes into the grid and then the utility acts as the middleman, the billing middleman, if you will, and puts a credit on your bill, which is set by the PUC. And then you pay the cost of the program and the project and we estimate that you will reduce your electric bill for the amount you sign up for by about 5%. So we have a unique opportunity here at Noiric for this, what we're calling the solar harvest project. So first of all, it's going to be financed by the community. We've raised about half of the money from individuals around the state, as I mentioned, by selling shares of stock in the project. But in addition to that, once it's built, you, the city, nonprofits, businesses, churches, libraries, schools, all can sign up for a share of the power. So we would invite the city of Wilsonville to do that and we hope that you will also come and, and visit this unique agricultural experiment when it's built. So I think now we have a few minutes left for questions.
Well, thank you. That is, that's really fascinating work and a long period of time in that kind of scientific study to get to this point. So congratulations on getting to this point. And I do- And I do want to ask our councillors if they have questions. I have one, if you could just review. How will the community at large start learning about this?
Yeah, good question. So, we're just starting to do outreach. You know, we're still, as you said, it's been about a two-year, at least 18-month development process. We're getting close. We hope to have it built this summer. And so, in a few months, we will start doing outreach. We're basically doing kind of word of mouth now through, some through Clackamas County. I think actually Clackamas County connected us with you, with the city.
Also, we have press campaigns through the university. We've actually gotten into some national and international press. It's been featured in the Capitol Press twice now. And I continue just to beat the streets. You know, I was at this for three years before Dan and I began a collaboration just to get the data. And it's been a slow, organic process to build the amount of people that know about this.
And so, if a farmer is growing crops on flat land where you could accommodate these solar panels, would they have a mechanism from the Extension Service or something to learn how to incorporate this?
That's what, that's one of the major components of us having this at the Extension Center itself. So, this is going to be basically a new program, a new extension program. I want to, well, I probably shouldn't call it that, but it's going to be a new initiative that I'm initiating and will lead. And we're creating learning materials for growers. We're going to have field days. We're going to have electric tractor testing days. So, we have electric tractors now. You don't need diesel fuel at this farm anymore. And basically, events to help people learn and actually discover how this can work for them.
Great.
And as I think Chad mentioned earlier, so this is, as far as you know, the first in the world, purpose-built solar project specifically designed to do this research. So, as you saw, there were solar arrays and then side-by-side control areas. And we expect it to get a lot of attention nationally and internationally.
Yeah, the next opportunity for press is actually this Thursday when the electric tractor is coming by for a photo op. And the film, it's not going to stay because there's delivery stuff, but the Soul Trek version of the electric tractor is coming on this Thursday to Enrec.
All right, well, thank you very much. Councillors, any other comments or questions? Well, I appreciate everyone, I appreciate you taking time to come speak to us about this so that we can share with our community and keep us posted.
Will do. Thank you for all of your time.
Thank you for your time. Good evening.
Okay, we'll now move to our citizen input and community announcement part of the meeting. And this is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on items not on the agenda. It's also the time to address items that are on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff in the city council make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizen input and before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
We have no citizen input, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll now move to councillor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements, starting with Council President Ocravol.
Thank you. This last week, I attended the GPI Small Cities Consortium on February 25th and was actually able to meet the new CEO and president of GPI. And so, that was a good opportunity. And also, on that day, I was able to attend the video intelligent live, the film screening and kind of discussion that they hosted afterwards. It was done by the Westland Wilsonville School District and the Wilsonville Alliance for Inclusive Communities. And really appreciated that opportunity for people within Wilsonville to learn themselves but also have that dialogue with other members of the community and with our school district. So, my daughter was able to join me that evening and join with the discussion too. And I think she got a lot out of it as well. So, that was a great opportunity. And we've been able to spend some time at the debris drop site the last two weekends. And, you know, we made some comments regarding the terrific work that staff has done. And I just really want to underscore those, you know, watching staff volunteers spend time on their weekends. And, you know, there was staff from IT, staff from finance, obviously, staff from, you know, our public works and parks and all departments and pitching in and helping and just doing such a tremendous, tremendous job. So, I wanted to really thank each and every person that's helped out in all sorts of unexpected ways this year, but especially with this, you know, this last recovery effort from the ice storm. And thank you so very much. And then I wanted to highlight, there is a new program that I believe is just starting at the library. And that is a program called 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten. And I'm excited to see how we can support and encourage that early childhood development for all kids within our community. And of course, one way through this is participation in the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And now, there is this 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program where community members are encouraged to read and to give access to 1,000 books to kids age zero to five, you know, before they start kindergarten, kind of breaking that down and helping people track their journey through that goal and provide support and encouragement along the way. So, there is more information about that actually on the library's website. And that is it for me for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Leehan.
Well, I don't actually have anything to add much beyond that. I was very likewise impressed with the work of the city crews. And you didn't have to actually go out and see city crews working, you just had to drive around and see how cleaned up the streets were getting. Because, and of course, it's easy to see the work that needs to be done going forward because of the number of trees that are gone out of the medians and gone on our streetscapes. So, that's work for the future. But just the number of stumps left tells you that somebody has been working overtime trying to get all of that cleaned up. And I've spent most of my time up on the hill because I have five acres of cemetery to take care of. And I've got a lot of stuff up there that I'm still trying to figure out what to do with or how to get it off the side of the mountain. But we'll continue to work on that. And I have not been in touch with anyone from the Frog Pond Church, United Church of Christ, who runs the other cemetery, which is the one on 65th. So, I don't know what kind of damage they may have had, but I'll try to get in touch with Ron Beckman and see what their situation is. But, you know, the city of Wilsonville has, does not have any cemeteries inside the city. But it's not like we don't have a lot of people from Wilsonville who have died. And a whole bunch of them are in those two cemeteries. And so, it's, you know, and neither of them receive any public support of any sort. They're all entirely volunteer situations. So, there's no, anyway. So, we'll, we continue to work on that, and we'll have, I'm sure, more volunteer time coming up in the spring. But one of our issues in the last year has been, of course, because of the pandemic, you can't have any parties. So, you can't have any work parties, and you can't have any, you can't have any get-togethers very easily. So, that's been very limited to try to get volunteers together to do anything. So, anyway, that's mostly what's been eating up my time. And I have a little tiny baby chainsaw that runs on a battery. That's what I use. But otherwise, the city has done a great job in all the neighborhoods and the parks, and we've got a lot of park property.
Thank you, Councillor Leehan. Councillor West.
Don't have much to report this meeting. I've been just working on, can you guys hear me okay? Yeah, I've just been working on with Representative Neron on some different legislative stuff, not necessarily tied to the city, but staying active because we're in regular session right now. So, I would encourage anybody who maybe you care about the voting bill because you have a lot of people testify to that, or maybe you care about a different bill or issue, and it's now regular session time. So, there are all kinds of hearings happening. So, you can go to OLIS to track the bills you care about, ones that impact Wilsonville specifically or nearby Wilsonville, or ones that maybe Oregon in general, or Clackamas County area, or whatever maybe has to do with fire and response, or land use, or any of those things that you care about, this is a great time to send an email, call your legislator. I've been, I did a policy brief yesterday on legislation for, that impacts kids in foster care and education. So, find something to engage in, it's a great opportunity. And so, I'll encourage people to do that, but I don't, beyond that, I don't have much else to report.
Thank you. Councillor Lindvill.
Well, I certainly would like to echo a thank you, big thank you to our city leadership and the willingness of our staff to do the work that they've done. I think opening up, staying open for debris for the extra period of time, I think, was the request that came from our citizens, and we were able to respond to that. And I think that was, that was very helpful to people who had to get back to work and just simply didn't have enough time to get their work done. So, I know that all of that comes with a cost to the city and that we will address that at some point. But I'm very thankful that we were able to do that for our community. I attended the Rotary Heart of Gold event, virtual event, and was really delighted to see Betty Lane Swite, who I know very well, is a personal friend, and really a well-deserving citizen, was able to be recognized as the first citizen for this year by the Rotary. She is just a, gives so much of her time and her energy and her expertise to so many of our community organizations and serves, has served on a number of our, she's been on Parks and Rec and helped on the Arts and Cultural Heritage Task Force as well. And so, she's been very active in the city as well as in her other volunteer time. I was on the League of Oregon Cities Conference Call on Friday, and I would encourage, they went through the bills that are currently out there that are probably the most important ones that impact cities of all sizes across Oregon. And on their website is their summary of those bills and the listing of which ones the league is supporting and which ones they are not. And I would encourage people to take a look at that as it impacts our city. And then I also attended the Wilsonville School District and Wilsonville Alliance for Inclusive Communities viewing of Intelligent Lives and the discussion that followed. Although I really appreciate the time with our mayor, it was like singing to the choir. And there were so many folks there that I was, it would have been really great to be in a small group in that discussion with a lot of people that I didn't know and have the opportunity. But we had some very good discussion and really looking, I think, at intellectual, differing intellectual abilities and how we are addressing those in a multitude of areas. And it just brought me back to the original discussions around that Cassandra Edwards brought to our council way early in the process of us thinking about DEI and how were we going to look at this, and her concerns about her son and that her concern over his driving and his ability to communicate well should he get stopped. And the safety is safety as well. So, it was a very good discussion. I think that is a video that is out there and available in the hinterland of the internet. And I would encourage people to just view it even outside of the discussion. And with my just heartfelt thanks to our staff and our city folks, that's the end of my councillor comments.
Thank you, Councillor Lindvill. We'll now move to our consent agenda, and will the city attorney please read it for us?
Resolution number 2873, a resolution granting an exemption from property taxes under ORS 307.540 to ORS 307.548 for Autumn Park Apartments, a low-income apartment development owned and operated by Northwest Housing Alternatives, Inc. Resolution number 2874, a resolution granting an exemption from property taxes under ORS 307.540 to ORS 307.548 for the Charleston Apartments, a low-income apartment development owned and operated by Northwest Housing Alternatives, Inc. Resolution number 2875, a resolution granting an exemption from property taxes under ORS 307.540 to ORS 307.548 for Creekside Woods LP, a low-income apartment development owned and operated by Northwest Housing Alternatives, Inc. Resolution number 2876, a resolution granting an exemption from property taxes under ORS 307.540 to ORS 307.548 for Rain Garden Limited Partnership, a low-income apartment development owned and operated by Caritas Community Housing Corporation. Resolution number 2877, a resolution granting an exemption from property taxes under ORS 307.540 to ORS 307.548 for the Weidemann Park, a low-income apartment development owned and operated by Accessible Living, Inc. Resolution number 2881, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Moore Excavation, Inc. for construction of the Fifth Street-Kinsman Road Extension Project. And finally, minutes of the February 18, 2021 city council meeting.
Is there a motion on consent?
You're on right move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councillor Leehan. Councillor Leehan. The motion to approve the consent agenda has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye and raising your right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0. Is there any city manager business?
Just a few updates, Your Honor. There was some mention and discussion about the debris site. I also wanted to thank all the volunteers that showed up last weekend. We organized that, I think, three days prior and got the word out the best we could. We didn't know what kind of response we'd have, but we actually got over 70 people to show up and help out their neighbors. And I think 130 people were assisted in that. So I want to, I want to thank those folks for showing up with their trucks and trailers and their gloves and safety vests and helping their fellow citizens out. We did have some problems with the tub grinder, unfortunately. Councillor Leehan, who showed up on, I think it was Sunday, and the tub had broken down. They got-
I didn't get to see that.
I know, bummer. But the good news is it'll be down there for a long time. And they did bring in a new one that only has 100 hours on it. So they're thinking this one will just chew that stuff up pretty quickly. So I guess the point on that debris site is it's going to, it's going to look pretty bad for about another month or two until we get all that, the chips out of there. So we've been having some initial discussions with the downgrading of the counties on what that's going to look like for all of our various departments. Obviously, you know, it's going to be different for different retail departments. So the library reopening is going to look a little different than the senior center. But the goal is to kind of get, slowly start to get people, you know, back into programs and services and as safe as we can, as quickly as we can, without putting staff at risk or, you know, our special populations. We have three contracted tree crews out there now in our parks and some of our kind of special areas where we have trees that are maybe threatening private property. The goal is to get the dog park open as soon as possible. It's going to take a while to get these parks cleaned up with all the widowmakers and all the trees that we have in the city. But they're out there, they're going to be out there for the next couple of weeks. So just ask people to be patient. We know that you want to get out there with this nice weather. We're doing everything we can with city staff and contracted crews. So hopefully we'll get that done quickly. We are also going to bring in a couple interns. We always bring in interns from Public Works, but we're going to use the two that we're hiring this year to go out and do a re-inventory of our trees that we've lost, because we had all that in our asset management system. So we'll compare with what we thought we had to what we actually have now. And then we'll be doing some targeted outreach to folks. And, you know, there's all the permitting issues and, you know, grant funds that we'll make available. So that's just going to be an ongoing thing. Probably we won't start on any kind of planting in earnest until this fall. We'll probably do some stuff this spring, but the real kind of heavy lifting will probably be later this fall. And then lastly, you will be seeing a supplemental budget coming your way. It'll be a big price tag, but we have some, we have some ways to cover those costs. And we're thinking that with the, the information that we've seen today that was provided by the counties and the state, that we, we're feeling like we have a pretty good shot at getting some of this reimbursed by FEMA. So stay tuned on that. That's all I have. Thank you for giving me the couple of minutes there, Mayor.
Well, thank you very much. Mr. Cosgrove, I hope you get a slower day soon. A councillor-
And, and if I could just add to that, that one of those tree crews spent the better part of a day up in the RV short tree, which is the big one on, at Park, Park Maryfield. And, and they got a lot of widowmakers down. One of them, they couldn't reach because it was hung up on too small of a branch for the guy to shimmy out there and get it. And he couldn't reach it. So, and it didn't seem that big. So I said, well, just let that one go. And it was hanging over our property anyway. It wasn't on the park side. And we had a big wind the next day. Darn if that thing didn't come down and it was like about four inches around. That thing went straight into the ground for like about eight inches. It was, it did not hit one of my chickens. So that was fortunate and didn't hit anything. So now it's gone and now I can truly say that tree looks safe to me. But, but boy, when those come down, they will, you know, they can come down like a spear, because they're very sharp on the end frequently. So, but now they're all, they're all out of there. And I've been telling people they can walk under there safely.
Well, thank you for reinforcing that, because I think the next thing that everybody can do in our community is the volunteers, remind others to stay out of the parks and-
The parks that are not, have not been cleared yet. And I do that constantly.
Right.
Those people, stay away.
Well, with that, Ms. Jacobson, is there any legal business?
No, there's no further legal business tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Well, the, I'm now going to move to adjourn the City Council meeting at 7:48. Thank you.
Bye.
Now, we have-
Hold up, hold up.
Urban renewal.
Urban renewal. Yes, reconcede.
Do we have to get off and on again?
Nope, just stay right there.
We are, we, you don't get to leave yet. We're, we're convening for a different meeting, the Urban Renewal Agency. And I'd like to call to order the March 1st, 2021 Urban Renewal Agency to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Member Linville?
Here.
Member West?
Here.
Member Oquavall?
Here.
Member Leehan?
Here.
Chair Fitzgerald?
Here.
This is an opportunity under Citizen Input for visitors to address the Urban Renewal Agency Board on items not on the agenda. It is also the time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff and the board will make every effort to respond to questions raised during Citizen's Input before tonight's meeting ends, or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Will the agency legal counsel please read the consent agenda?
Urban Renewal Resolution Number 314, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency Board authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Moore Excavation, Inc. for construction of the Fifth Street-Kinsman Road Extension Project. And minutes of the February 18, 2021 URA meeting.
And we, we have no Citizen Input, Chair Fitzgerald.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, I didn't wait for that.
That's all right. I just, I wanted to get it on the record that nobody was waiting to talk.
Thank you. And would someone who would like to make a motion on consent, please raise their hand to be recognized first. Councillor Linville.
Easier to just raise my hand. Your Honor, I move to approve the URA consent agenda.
Thank you, Member Linville. I wanted to correct myself. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Leehan. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 The motion passes 5 to 0. The Urban Renewal Agency is now adjourned at 7:51 PM. And that is-